If everyone please stand. Call this council meeting to order. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Going to ask Councilman Gregg if he believes in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. May be seated. At this time, we have a roll call. Call to order, roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Wilkinsburg?
Mr. Pritchard Callaway?
Here.
Ms. Saber?
Present.
Mr. Ramkin?
Here.
Mr. Chough?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Just a reminder, make sure you all turn on your microphones. The livestream will not catch anything you say if you do not.
We have the minutes from last meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Are there discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say likewise. You should have received your check, receipt of check register in your packet. If you have received those, please raise your hand. Thank you. Public comments?
Elkhorn Lake?
We'll have to get the sheet there.
Devin, is she supposed to be in public comments? Because I don't see her actually.
Yes. Cheers.
Hi. I'm Tina Lilly. I'm with Georgetown Scott County Parks and Recreation. I just wanted to request a road closure for our Juneteenth celebration on June 17th. What now?
What streets?
It's on Chambers Avenue from Prospect to Mark Street.
And the time?
From noon, 12:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Motion, Mayor. Motion is made and properly second. Are there further questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say likewise. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Deloas-Veniger.
Mine is small. I'm just double checking. I don't get the paper. You know, you cut prices where you can and cut those dollars. But I was here in, not here, but I came to council in January and we had talked about discounts for seniors for the water and haven't seen it yet. And I just wanted to make sure that somebody was aware that we haven't got it yet because it was cut off a long time ago and every little bit helps. So that's what I'm talking about. That's, that was all it is, so you can get some help everywhere you can. So is it coming? When is it coming? Do y'all know?
It's actually on the agenda tonight for second reading. So the, the law requires a lot of steps to implement a special class of sewer users. So we have met most of those requirements and the council will actually vote on that tonight. So the goal would be that that would be implemented in the June billing cycle.
And how much would it be?
It's a 10%.
It is 10%?
Yes.
Okay, not retroactive or retroactive?
No, not retroactive.
Well, we could have used it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? All right, a couple of items from the mayor's comments. I talked with Tim, with Republic, and we have a monthly call. And again, I expressed some concerns on some of the pickups and not pickups and making sure that our, that our people are educated on what are procedures. He did inform me that to have them to continue to report any failure to be picked up. Their drivers are supposed to be able to make some evidence by taking photos of when they pick it up and when they put it back down. And trash that are out, we asking them that if it's, have them to get out of the truck and actually pick up, pick up any loose debris. And he said he would do that. The online for the tracking of the trucks and so on should be in, up and running. He said somewhere in the fall, they're looking around September to have that in play. Again, if you have some type of concern and pictures, council as well as constituents out in the community, you be sure to email those to us and we will forward them to Tim. And they keep a running log of what's going on and complaints and they will address those as soon as possible. This week is a very busy week in Georgetown. We have the Horsie 100 this weekend, starting on Friday. So you may want to talk about that or actually take part in that. It's a bike event and at that time, from what they had in the past, they have hundreds and hundreds of bikers. They are estimating revenue to be pretty substantial, pretty big. So we want to support that. They will have some streets where you have to be very careful about when they're out. Also, we have a policing and coordinate with them and others in taking involved in this particular endeavor. Party on Main Street starts this weekend, so that is going downtown. Graduation starts for those at Great Crossing and Scott County and Phoenix Horizon. So it's a lot of activities going on, so we want you to make, be aware of that. And that one other important item, we are in the process of transitioning ourselves to our locations. As I know now, I'm down on Water Street, hopefully in the next week or two, that we'll be able to make the final move to be there. We estimate somewhere maybe less of, is it, we're talking about June or mid-June or they'll actually start, maybe start the process of actually starting the renovation process. But if I'm not mistaken, finance, resource and already on down by the water company, so they've got already set up and ready to go. And so, and by, within two weeks or so, once we get everybody moved out, we will make sure that everybody gets notice of this. We'll put it in the paper, we'll put it on our website, we'll update everything. And council, we will update you to make sure that, you know, when we, everybody's finally out. We're the last to leave, myself and Devin and also I think, I think Eddie's still there. We're going to try to kick him out later, but we'll get him out as soon as possible. And then there's others. But once we make all that transition and get it finalized, we'll make sure you are aware of that. All right. Council committee reports. And we have traffic.
Okay. Let's see, let me open this up here. Since I figure this out. Started out with the request for, and it is on the agenda down under City Engineer, a report from Georgetown College in reference to requesting for street lighting in a presentation. If anybody needs to see the pictures or anything, Eddie or myself can email those out to anybody tonight if you would like to see those. The Ward Hall, Housing, homeowner associations requesting a speed sign. Eddie's going to go out and take a look at that and see where, if any signs are out there and then potentially look at putting up some signs. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie. Soon as school lets out, we're going to potentially start on Cardinal Drive project.
We just got the, it's on the agenda tonight, but we're in the construction contract.
We did have a guest in Mary Howard and who has issues with Court Street and some various issues going on there. We did speak with her. I know you have mayor and the committee, so we're trying to help her out as much as we can. So the Scott, Great Carlson's High School student traffic observations had, from what Eddie had relayed to the committee is that there was quite a few observations from high school students and they were very well put, very well received, not just, "Speed limit's stupid, we need to change that." It, you know, they had a lot of thought and a lot of good information put into those. And Mayor Jenkins did send a letter to them thanking the school and the students for their information.
One thing on that Todd is the state transportation cabinet controls all those lights and all the bypasses, the state light. They offered to go and speak with the students if they'd like to have them. So they offered to go to the speakers class and talk about how things work, so.
Right. Next item was the Georgetown 460 street scape, final punch list. And there's, they're going to look at the, the walls down here and try to come up with some different concepts where we've had some complaints about historic in Georgetown not looking the same. So they're looking at different options on that. And then Old Oxford Road, the bridge now is at 37 ton due to road resurfacing as well as the city bridge on Old Dulaplane Road. Signs were put up at the request of Kentucky Department of Transportation. And the bridge over Lemons Mill at the railroad tracks right by Carbide. They, Norfolk Southern is looking at doing double stack rail cars coming through there, so there may be some changing of that. And it is out for bid, is that correct?
It is on, it's on the schedule, six-year road plan scheduled for replacement, but I don't know when they're going to, we don't have a bid date.
Okay. And then the last thing is the street lights on the state roads, looks like it's going to be, because of the materials, it's going to look like it'll be, the 25 will be installed sometime this fall. So and our next meeting will be Monday, June 19th at 4:30 at the police department.
That's going to have to be, that's Juneteenth?
That's right, Juneteenth. We've got to come either move the date or we're going to cancel that meeting until July. I think we may, Connie's not here, so may get with you, we may just bump it today, so.
Todd, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I've had citizens in the last couple of weeks and the, the two traffic places that they talk to me the most about, I'm not sure we can do anything about, but they're around Kroger. And I've heard another light is going up there. Did, did anybody read something about that? That there's going to be?
A light at Kroger?
Are you referring to like by Bojangles?
Yeah, by Bojangles.
Yes, and you'll actually hear about that when Stacy goes over her budget memo.
Okay.
But the state has approved the light going right there. So obviously the signaling will be synced with the light that's right before it. But the issue is getting from the medical office building and the hospital, to and from the hospital there.
Right.
So it would, it would really present kind of a frauder situation. So that has been approved. And the, the plan is that the installation will be jointly funded by the city and the county. Obviously then the state maintains it. But yes, that is, that is the plan.
Okay, and the other place is still, it's such a mess over there by Walmart. It's so dangerous. Is there anything that can be done to make that safer?
Such as? We're, it-
You know where we have the, by Starbucks and Walmart and people coming out where Applebee's is? I mean, it's just a mess.
Yes.
The only, only way to fix that, and I don't know, and Eddie can, can, that be my opinion, would be to do away with that entrance right there at Starbucks. Make them go all the way down to the light.
Yeah.
But I don't know that, I don't know that that would work.
The state, that's a state, connector road's a state road.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So they're doing an engineering analysis of the whole road, trying to make it work better, especially around Starbucks down that end. It's, they've had, you know, with the barricades up there.
Right.
Three or four years ago, it forced people to go right. That was step one and so we're hoping that they'll finish up their study, wrap up their study this year and make some recommendations and maybe go right into rebuilding that road.
Okay, so they are working on it?
They're working on it.
All right, thank you.
You thinking?
Yeah, Todd, I'd sent some pictures regarding Old Oxford Road down from Applebee's and water coming over the road and cars actually have to pass on the other side of. So I shared that with Eddie as well, so.
I think Eddie's, Eddie, it's on Eddie's list.
So it looks like a trench issue up there.
That's on Oxford Drive.
It's at the storage center.
Yeah, just making sure.
Do a-
It's at the storage center.
Right.
We also have to look at the entrance to that because I think with it being ditched, when it gets down to that entrance, it hits that and goes around out into the road as well. So a couple of areas to look at.
Before we go on, I want to make sure you're aware of something that's going on. I'm sure you all hear all the sirens going on. We had a, I think Scott County Sheriff's Department had a, involved shooting at this time. I don't know all the details at this time, but there was a, a situation where a deputy sheriff was involved in the shooting. So we will keep our arms and our prayers open for them and as they deal with this and as soon as we hear something more about that, we will get that back to you.
I want to apologize because it's, it is a coworker and I was notified that he didn't make it. Of course, I can't say anything right now, but just please pray for the family right now. And I apologize. I went closely with the deputies.
No, no apology needed.
I know we've got some important stuff going on.
Your mic's not on.
I know we've got some important items on, on the agenda tonight, but I, I mean, I, I don't have the answers. But I'm just wondering if we should even be meeting right now. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I mean, this, this has never come up with me before, so, I mean, I know everyone is, is heartfelt, but I mean, I don't know if we, we have to stop and come back another time. We have to do that, so.
And we could, we could take a 10-minute break and come back and reconvene the meeting. I mean, I, I think.
That would be good. That's a good idea. So we're going to take, I need a motion.
Motion, Mayor, that we take a short break.
Okay. And a second? Okay, motion's made, properly second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say likewise. We're at a 10-minute break.